Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hudgens is just stepping up right now. And on my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Todd Wilchin and Commissioner Bill Avery. And I am Commissioner Roma Amundson and I'm Chair of the Board. So assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. Will you all join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And thank you for joining in. Will you join? Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda now, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all writ material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. Material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016.
I move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approved last week's meeting, the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through August 30th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the claims that have been processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are public hearings. First public hearing is for Keno Fund projects. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. First hearing this morning deals really strictly with our Keno Fund. The Keno Fund is part of the budget, which will be the next public hearing, but the way our policies are set up is that on the Keno money, we have a specific public hearing on how that money is going to be spent for the next fiscal year. So in the Keno Fund itself, the last few years, we've been using the money for a little bit of video conferencing. We've been using it for, we are required to set 5% of it aside for preventive grants. And then for the most part, we've been using it for property tax relief. We've started trying to set some money aside in there for some right of way for our East Beltway project. So the way that we're, we've got it set up in our budget for this next year is we've got $55,000 set aside for the 5% preventive grants. We've got a remaining amount of $59,949 for video conferencing. We're kind of waiting for a couple bills from the state and that project will be over. The project's pretty much over. We've just got a couple payments that we're still going to need to make. East Beltway, we're going to move $500,000 over that direction, which will give us a balance of $652,503. So it's a lot better than we were. And we'll keep trying to move that direction. So that's kind of, that's kind of the first step there. And then the, the last portion of our Keno will be a transfer to the general fund as property tax relief, and that's a $550,000 number. So, so that's kind of what the Keno funds are set up for, for this year. The way it also works is we just really spend it after we receive it. So we'll still budget to receive a little over a million dollars, but the way our policy is set up is we do not spend it until we receive it. So we'll collect it this year, and then we'll go through this hearing again next year and make the determination of how we want to spend that money. So that's where the Keno Fund, like I said, the next hearing, the Keno Fund will be part of the overall budget, but we do this one specifically for it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dennis. And next item is Lancaster County's proposed budget for the fiscal year. And before we begin that, I actually would like to read a statement regarding that. So before we, before we start, I would like to make some comments relative to the budget process and the proposed 2016-2017 budget. The Lancaster County Board's proposed budget that was filed with the County Clerk's Office on July 29th was completed using a property tax rate of 27.53 cents, along with a projection of a 2.75% increase in valuation. A couple of changes have occurred since that filing. The actual valuation increase was 2.92%, which will generate an additional $121,242. The additional revenue will be transferred to the Bridge and Special Road Fund to be used for bridge projects. The other change is the total proposed budget of expenditures and revenues that have been increased by $4 million because of the county's interlocal agreement with the City of Lincoln and LES for a paving project on Rokeby Road. The paving costs will be paid entirely by LES as a part of its project to construct a new LES operations center, but the costs will be run through the county budget. Lancaster County does not receive any sales or income tax and relies heavily on property tax to fund the budget. The general fund also receives a substantial amount of inheritance tax. Inheritance tax is deposited into the general fund and is utilized to decrease the amount of property tax required. Lancaster County received $6.3 million in inheritance tax for fiscal year 2015-2016. If it were not for the use of inheritance tax, an additional 2.8 cents would have been needed in property tax. The total budget of expenditures is $187,227,504. This is a 5.02 increase from last year. Before adding the $4 million LES project, the percentage increase was 2.64%. The property tax rate will decrease from 27.83 cents to 27.53 cents. The reduction will be allocated to the Railroad Transportation Safety District. The amount of property taxes for the proposed budget is $64,417,400. Here are some of the notable changes to the budget. The total budget of expenditures in the general fund has increased by 1.47%. The increase associated with payroll costs is 1.88 cents, or percent, excuse me. Let me read that over again. The increase associated with the payroll costs is 1.88%. Health insurance costs for the majority of county employees increased by 2.4%. The transfer amounts from the general fund to the Bridge and Special Road Fund and the Highway Fund will increase 1.1 million from last year. There will also be 500,000, 500,000 of Keno funds allocated to the East Beltway. The transfer amounts from the general fund to the Workers' Compensation Fund and the other self-insurance fund will decrease 1.8 million from last year. Prior year activity allowed for the decrease. Property taxes will increase by $306,000 in the building fund due to the purchase of furniture and fixtures for the 605 Building. And the 605 Building, just to remind people, this is the old jail that is being remodeled into an office building. The complete 2016-2017 proposed budget can be found on the county's website. We appreciate the cooperation of the elected officials and the appointed apartment, department heads in arriving at this year's budget. Also, a very special thanks to all county employees for their assistance in providing the necessary services within the budget constraints. At this time, we welcome any comments you may have relative to the county proposed budget.
I'll go ahead and swear again.
Let me do this, Dan.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Would you please repeat that?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I will not swear or affirm because I see nothing in the notice of budget hearing published 23 August and nothing in the Nebraska Budget Act 13 NRS 501 et cetera that requires an oath or affirmation.
Well, Mr. Clerk, will you please note in the minutes that he has refused to affirm or to swear? Okay? Please proceed.
Gary Aldridge, Lincoln, Nebraska. A comment offered by a public official Tuesday last, quote, "The budget is not finalized and will not be until a public hearing, until after a public hearing." In theory, correct. Not my first rodeo. In fact, the statement is disingenuous, unsupported and unsupportable. On the internet, quote, "official site of Lancaster County," two separate and I think different proposed budgets are displayed. In the 2017 summary embedded in the, quote, "budget narrative," someone claims the proposed spending and tax level maintains, quote, "current services that our county taxpayers deserve and expect." Deserve and expect. Goodness gracious, this from some nameless and faceless bureaucrat stuffed with hubris or powers beyond those of mortal men. Opinions like these, speaking for the entire population of the county, belong on the opinion page, not in an official document. And in that same document, quote, "The budget of expenditures is 5.02% increase in comparison to the 2015-2016 adopted budget." In theory, correct. In fact, facts are a stubborn thing. In the notice of budget hearing and budget summary published, The Star, 23 August 2016, two columns, quote, "actual dispersments 2015-2016, as in money spent in FY '16, $152 million." Quote, "proposed budget of dispersments FY '17, $187 million. The difference, $35 million." Year over year, from actual FY '16, $152 million, to proposed FY '17, $187 million, an increase of 23%. I confess I am easily confused, intimidated by numbers. Wait, now I see it. 5.02 does in fact live next door to 23. In the category, quote, "specific budgets," the, quote, "building fund property tax will increase by $306,000," the 605 Building is driving up the cost. Am I the only one, or do others think if you're in a hole, stop digging? The 2017 budget posted on the, on the official site of Lancaster County continues to display through 700 hours, 30 August 2016, 7 o'clock today, incorrect numbers. The, quote, "Bridge and Special Road Fund is light $4 million. No corruption, nothing sinister, just physical laziness or mental constipation." Thank you.
Can I go ahead and swear again?
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name's Tim Haruza. I appear today on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. The Lincoln Independent Business Association appears in support of the county's proposed 2017 budget. We begin by saying that we appreciate the hard work done by this board, county administrators, and county department heads and elected officials to hold the line on property taxes with this budget. The increased commitment to the Railroad Transportation Safety District, or RTSD, by this board meant that maintaining the overall tax levy would require a small reduction in the county's general fund levy. Your willingness to make the efforts necessary to do that and protect the interests of taxpayers is deserving of applause. Second, we appreciate and recognize your plan to begin building up safety, savings to pay for the East Beltway project by placing a half million dollars in a fund this year. We appeared before this board previously and expressed our belief that the East Beltway is absolutely vital to our transportation infrastructure in Lancaster County and to the future growth and development of our capital city. Thank you for your investment in this important project. And while the East Beltway is an important piece of our future infrastructure planning, Leba would also like to reiterate our call for continued investment in our roads and bridges. Month in and month out, we continue to see our county road and bridge work fall behind as natural elements take their toll on decades-old infrastructure. With each storm, our bridges take a hit. County Engineer Pam Dingman has worked hard to put together a plan that would address our aging bridges, deteriorating asphalt and concrete, and our need to pave county roads and see, that see increasing number of, numbers of cars using them daily. We are glad to see you commit an additional $1 million to these project, projects compared to last year's budget, and want to urge this board to continue to prioritize the county engineer's budget moving forward. Doing so is pivotal to ensuring that the future of our county road systems meets our growing needs and keeps the public safe. Leba also acknowledges the fact that certified valuations came in slightly higher than the estimated increase contemplated in the development of this budget. In the past, Leba has asked this board to return such increases to taxpayers by reducing the levy. Because of the dire situation faced with regard to our county roads and bridges, however, Leba is asking that the, the additional revenue be directed to the county engineer. This additional $120,000 may not seem like much, but even the slightest amount can help us continue to meet our infrastructure needs. Finally, we would reiterate our call to the county board to work with the Nebraska State Legislature and reform the Commission on Industrial Relations in an effort to alleviate the burdens placed on taxpayers by a system that continues to favor pay hikes nearly every year at the expense of the taxpayer. Leba thanks the board for being mindful of taxpayer interests as you developed this budget. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Avery?
Thank you, Tim. Are you aware that the, the cost of repairing the bridges and roads that we've heard so much about over the past several weeks would be in excess of $9 million?
In terms of the requested budget that the county engineer brought forth? Yes, I understand that. And like I said, I appreciate the decision by this board to add a million dollars over what was, what was proposed, or I guess what was appropriated last year. So we appreciate the difficult decision that you guys are making in terms of that requested amount versus the amount that you've appropriated, but we do think that the additional million dollars is a good, good first step toward that, Commissioner.
Well, I have a question for you and Leba.
Sure.
Would you be willing to support us if we decide to go with a multimillion dollar infusion into roads and bridges? And it would mean a property tax increase. Where would you be then?
I, to be candid with you, I think that, I think that considering the situation that we're in and the dire circumstances that we're seeing with three more bridges, I guess, on your agenda today, we're interested in exploring options. Now, I don't know if we're prepared to come forward and say that we would necessarily support a tax increase, but I think that, you know, if we were to see a plan, that we would consider it. I think that, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the membership. I hate stepping out of where I'm allowed, you know, the authority that I'm given, but I'm, I would tell you that we would consider that.
That's the reality.
I think that, I think that we have questions from members often. I think that the situation is real, and I think that we'd be happy to look at different plans or alternative plans for how we address that issue.
My guess is if we, if we recommend a, a property tax increase, you'd be on us like a bad cold.
I, I, I think that I would be speaking out of turn if I, if I responded to that, Commissioner, but...
Well, that's, that's the reality, Tim.
Sure.
And the fact is, we're not opposed to improving bridges and roads in the county. In fact, I have not voted for one of those closure resolutions, certainly not in, in this budget year. And I am very much concerned about the accumulated closures.
And I, and I think that we are too. And that's why I'm saying, if, if there's a plan or a proposal, we'd be happy to look at it. But I, I just, I, I can't tell you whether or not, without seeing it, that we would or would not support any proposal.
Well, the reality is that without the property tax increase, you're not going to be able to do what we're told we need to do.
Well, I tell you what, Tim, we really do thank you for coming and for your positive point of view. I appreciate very much what you have said. You need to see a plan, and that might be something that we work on throughout this next year. Yes, Deb?
And I also appreciate your willingness to adhere to the longtime policies and procedures that the board has in place with regards to testifying at public hearings.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in, in regard to the public hearing? In regard to the budget?
Am I good, or do I need to be?
I, okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. I just want to address a couple items today. You know, as far as the budget document versus the actual expenditures, as we have talked, you know, through, throughout the budget process, you know, during our staff meetings on all of that, certain funds within the budget document are budgeted really to spend everything that we plan to receive. So for example, visitors' promotion, Keno money, economic development money, the way that we set that budget up is that we budget to spend it so that we have the spending authority, so that throughout the fiscal year, if some, you know, some business comes in and they're eligible for an economic development loan from the county, we have the spending authority to spend that. Now, for example, this last fiscal year, we did not have any new loans. So when you look at the actual expenditures, actual expenditures are a lot lower than what was budgeted. But like I always remind everybody, what we do with this budget is we set up spending authority. It's that same thing with that $4 million LES project, you know? We've got to run it through our budget. We've got to have the spending authority. If we don't build it in, we're going to jump through the, through the hoops again to do a public hearing, amend the budget, refile it with the state auditor's office. And, and to me, it, it just makes a little more sense that we set the spending authority on what could happen. That money that we're setting to spend has nothing to do with property tax dollars. Our, our property tax dollars are, are set off a specific couple funds that we've got. So I just kind of want to make sure that, you know, we've been talking about that, you know, at staff meetings as we've gone through the budget process. The other item that I want to address is the proposed budget that is filed by July 31st with the County Clerk's Office. As I have mentioned, that proposed budget that is done by July 31st versus the adopted budget that takes place today, things can happen within that month. Things do happen, and that's where we're kind of at right here. So the budget that is filed out there on that, on our website is the one as of July 31st. To me, you go back and you take a look at every proposed budget that is out there on the website, you know, that is the one that is filed by July 31st. The budget summary and the adopted budget that will be out there is what has taken place through discussions that we've had at staff meetings from July 31st until the adoption, which will take place today. So I just kind of wanted to, to kind of go over a couple of those items. And if you've got any other questions, I can try to answer those.
Commissioner Hudgens?
Yes, Mr. Meyer, I think you've done a commendable job visiting with all of us, taking our comments and incorporating them into a budget that I think is very responsible. And I tend to agree with the comments from Leba this morning about this additional $120,000 that became available late in the process. With our dire need for bridges and the attention that they need across this county, I think we better, better put it there. However, I do have one concern that Extension has made a request for, for the six additional offices out there. I understand through a reconfiguration on the inside, they came up with two of those places. They've looked at the, the old Election Commissioners Building, or the HWS Building across the street, and the cost that would be incurred is very similar to building on out there. And we have not met that request. But in visiting with you, do you feel if we were able to finance this? do you feel if we were able to finance this through a NACO lease or something like this, that we may be able to bring forth some monies to fund that out of the building fund? Or does it have to be mentioned in the budget?
Well, I think, you know, as we've gone through the process with the discussion of our building fund this year, one of our discussions has been with a few different projects is that it's really a cash flow issue this year. You know, because we've got, for example, we've got the motor vehicle building. We've got this extension. We've got a few items that we have discussed as possibilities. Now it really comes down to cash flow. You know, our biggest concern right now is the 605 Building. And I think once- once the 605 Building is set up and ready to go, I think then we look at cash flow and we see where are we at for other types of projects. So I do think there's no doubt there can be discussion about an item like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to mention, I think that that is something for a future discussion, but-
But I wanted it mentioned in here because we did not honor that request from the Extension for that funding for that. And I did want it on the record that in my thirty years of service, we only built on a storage shed in those thirty years, and we have increasing needs out there that I think we need to address.
Are there any other just- yes. Commissioner Avery?
Dennis, we have talked a lot about bridges and roads. We're going to do it again today. Do you recall how much we budgeted in the last budget cycle for roads and bridges?
So, Bill, are you talking- in my mind, I'm thinking of property tax dollars right now. And what has happened over the last couple of years is last year we increased our budget by two-point-two million dollars. The years before that, it had been pretty stable. And let's just say it was about a ten-million-dollar number. Last year, we bumped it by two-point-two million because of some of the issues we were having, and now this year we bumped it by one-point-one million. So that's kind of where we're at, tax dollar-wise.
Well, let me ask you this. Obviously, we haven't met the expectations and the requests of the county engineer. And you- do you know whether or not all of the money that we allocated last year has been spent on roads and bridges?
Right. The way that, you know, the way that the end of the fiscal year ended up was that, you know, so much money was encumbered, which basically means that money was allocated against the budget, but the projects had not been completed yet. So, you know, that's kind of- you know, with the roads and bridges, June 30th kind of falls in the middle of kind of construction. So we do tend to encumber money, and then those projects get finished the next fiscal year. And so, if you're asking about that dollar amount, that was about a nine-to-ten-million-dollar number that we rolled into this fiscal year for projects.
So we're still spending it?
Yes. We're still completing those projects, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Well, Dennis, thank you so very much for your work. Okay, let's go on to the correlating items 4A through 4C.
Under New Business, 4A is a resolution on matter of exceeding the budgeted restricted funds limit for the 2015-2016 fiscal year by an additional one percent.
All right, these next three are kind of my resolutions that I'll be talking about. The first one is the additional one percent. This one deals with the lid on restricted funds. Just to remind everybody, the lid can grow at a two-point-five percent increase each year per statute. Statute then also says if you have a supermajority vote of your board, you can increase it by an additional one percent. This resolution is asking the board to really vote for that additional one percent. On that one percent, I also like to remind everybody that that one percent does not automatically mean that property taxes are growing by the two-and-a-half plus one percent. All that is doing is it's growing our base amount. So that if we ever needed the ability to tap into that far lid, we've got it there. Now, sometimes that doesn't seem like that big a deal, but if we remember about a bill in the legislature last year was really messing with changing up that lid, and it really got into what was your unused authority, what's your base amount. So I think it's even more important this year that we still vote for that so that our base amount kind of grows at the maximum amount that it can, and we can still look back at property taxes and we built our budget based on what we needed. Now we're just taking care of the lid side. So it's really, to me, it's really two different issues. So this one percent is just allowing our base amount to grow by that extra percentage.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's move to second that we approve this resolution on the matter of exceeding the budgeted restricted funds by one percent. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution on matter of approving the Lancaster County budget for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017.
Okay, this will be the actual adoption of the budget, and there will be an attachment A to this. And what this attachment A will do is it will outline what has changed from really what the proposed budget was set up at. So in here, what you will see is, number one, you'll see the four million dollars for the LES project. Number two, you will see in the general fund, the property tax is increasing by that one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-forty-two based on the valuation increase. You will then see that money transferred to the bridge fund. And remember with transfers, what then happens is then I also then show that revenue going into the bridge fund and expenditures going out of there. So that one-hundred-and-twenty-one-two-forty-two actually shows up twice. And that's just kind of the way it is because of a transfer. But that's what we'll show in attachment A, the difference between what was proposed and what's the final numbers.
Commissioner Wilchun?
Yeah, I just, you know, want to comment on the overall budget because I think it's important that the taxpayers know that this is not something that we just started doing. This is something that we work on all year. And that, as the chair had mentioned, that the county board worked in with the other elected officials and appointed officials, and I think has developed a balanced budget. And I say balanced, I mean that it combines the right type of increases in spending with the roads and bridges, but also fulfills our commitment to the mayor of Lincoln to start to restore the authority for the RTSD, which I think that's something that I think is to be commended because really we're doing two things. We are actually reducing the county budget by a point-three cents while keeping the levy even and making an additional one million dollars investment in our roads and bridges. And I think that's something that is, I think, the county should be commended for because other government entities out there have not been as successful as the county.
Commissioner Hudgens?
Can you read that section again about the one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars? It's committed to bridge engineering services?
Yeah, so basically what we'll do is we levy for it in the general fund, and then we make a transfer to the Bridge and Special Road Fund. And so then, once we get it- so then I also then show a revenue into that fund and then the expenditure to use it for a bridge project. So that's why it shows up twice.
In accounting terms, it would be fund accounting, which is not fun, it's fund.
Yeah, with a D, but it is kind of fun, Todd. I mean, it's kind of fun.
For those of us that took accounting government, no.
Right.
Will we need any type of special motion or anything to make sure those are designated for bridge engineering services?
Those are set up in that attachment A, and it's kind of already built into those numbers. So this, the adoption of this resolution takes care of it.
I will move adoption of the resolution, including the items listed in attachment A.
Second.
Let's move to second that we approve this res-
Dennis, I know the board wants to thank you personally, as well as Liz and all the other people that work throughout the year to get to this point. There's many, many hours of behind-the-scenes work, and thank you and Liz and your team.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what we do.
Commissioner Avery?
Voting for this resolution and Appendix A, you said?
Yeah, Attachment A, yes.
Attachment A. That then means the one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-forty-two, that that is now permanently committed?
Yes.
Cannot touch it?
It is, it will be set up so that it's moved into the Road and Special Bridge Fund.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we approve this resolution on the matter of approving the Lancaster County budget with attachment A. Is there any further discussion? And I guess I wanted to say too that, you know, what makes me happy about this is that we're actually planning for the future with the E spellway. Yeah, I think that that is a huge, that's a huge step, and we have put that money aside, so. Okay, please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4C is a resolution in a matter of final allocation of levy authority to all political subdivisions subject to Lancaster County levy authority.
Okay, this is my last resolution, then I am leaving, so.
Dennis, did you hear that? Sorry.
This resolution comes down to the allocation of the fifteen cents to the miscellaneous political subdivision. So this is where, once this resolution is set, I will then email it off to all of our fire districts, the Ag Society, the Railroad Transportation Safety District, so that they can then prepare their budget documents off the allocations that they asked for. By July 1, or by August 1, those political subdivisions filed their information with our, with my office. We looked at it. We talked about it at staff meetings. The requests that were made all do fall within the overall fifteen cents. So this resolution is just taking those numbers and putting it out there saying, okay, those numbers that were submitted, they do fit within the allowable numbers that are out there. Now, this will just allow them to go out there and build their own budgets off those numbers.
I move approval.
Second.
Move to second that we approve this resolution in the matter of the final allocation of the levy authority to all political subdivisions. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Dennis.
D is a resolution on matter of recognizing September 2016 as National Preparedness Month.
Good morning. Jim David-Saber, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management Director. I appreciate you considering the resolution before you to recognize September as National Preparedness Month. It's a program that's sponsored by the Department of Homeland Security, part of their Ready campaign. It's always a good idea, or that's what I do on a daily basis, is try to preach preparedness. September really gives us an opportunity to focus on those things. There's a saying in emergency management, people don't plan to fail, they fail to plan. So a little information out there now in a manageable way will help them do that. If you wait until a disaster has struck to make your preparations, it's too late. So that's why we try to take the high road here. The slogan that DHS has approved for this year's campaign is, "Don't wait, communicate, make your emergency plan today." So as we work our way through the month of September, we will focus on that. We also partner with NEMA, Nebraska Emergency Management Agency. They have a public information officer who spends a lot of time and effort preparing for this month. And then as we work our way through the month, there are weekly topics to focus on those things. One of the things that I dropped off for you ahead of time, it's just a simple emergency list that's published by FEMA. It's available on their website. It just gives you a checklist of things to keep in mind when you are preparing for your home, your family, your business, your community, just a simple checklist. As I said, if you can check all those boxes off, you should prepare yourself or should be adequately prepared to deal with whatever may occur. We stand fast with the three-day rule. Make sure you have a seventy-two-hour supply of what you need in your household, basic supplies, medication. Don't forget pets when you're planning for those things. There's a lot of different sources out there for, and I will set my phone up here once I queue it up, just so you have a visual. But FEMA has an app if you live in the app world. That just with a few clicks, it gives you that information that's readily available.
Zoom in just a little bit. Can you zoom in on that? I think, yeah, there you go.
So again, it's one of those things, just a simple- that if you click on any of those things, it gives you a drop-down list to keep track of those things. So again, just one of those things to promote preparedness. One of the things that emergency management is doing specifically in October, I'm going to host a CERT class. And CERT is Community Emergency Response Team. It not only promotes self-sufficiency, it is primarily focused on the community at large. It prepares our citizens to be self-sufficient. It also gives them the basic information that they need that can support a response of first responders in a large-scale disaster. So I think anything that we can do to promote that preparedness will make us better served in the long run.
I do have a question for you. Is it possible to put on the county website a link to FEMA?
And in fact, that's what we have through our, correct, through the local emergency management page. And then you can also just go to ready.gov. But again, we certainly want to make it as simple as possible for people to find this information in order to do that. Also, the community partners I work with, the nonprofit Volunteer Partners does a great job of providing information year-round. COAD, Community Organizations Active in Disaster is another group that I work with on a regular basis. September is kind of our keynote month, so to speak, to draw as much attention to it as possible. But again, it's a year-round emphasis that we're always doing to make sure that people, if they have questions, I want to make them as self-sufficient as possible. I'm always available to answer questions, provide resources, anything I can do to point them in the right direction. As I said, I think it better serves us all in the long run.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilchun?
Just a question or clarification, because I have done these before. So does this resolution, is it a requirement of either the NEMA or FEMA?
It is not. No, it's correct.
And this is just, and there are no dollars that are associated with this. This is just to raise awareness for emergency preparedness.
That's correct.
You're kind of emphasizing it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would move approval.
Second.
Move to second that we approve this resolution on the matter of recognizing this month as National Preparedness Month. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is an Emergency Management Performance Grant from NEMA to Lancaster County on behalf of Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management in amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, fourteen dollars and fifty cents for the period from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
And this is one, in order to qualify for this grant funding, it does require our active participation in that. Essentially, what this amounts to is fifty percent of the salaries and benefits of the three paid staff that we have for Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. By participating in the EMPG Program, Emergency Management Performance Grant, it makes us eligible to receive those funds. We're required to complete quarterly reports, submit a plan a year in advance, what we look to accomplish during the coming fiscal year in order to be eligible for these funds. And the document you have before you is, again, a grant adjustment notification to accept those funds.
I move approval.
Second. Let's move to second that we approve these EMPG grant funds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Abstain.
Shore? Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention.
And Jim, thank you so much for your hard work in the service of Lancaster County residents.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Four F is a resolution for acceptance of Meadowview First Edition for Maintenance by Lancaster County generally located at Southwest 78th Street and West Van Dorn Street in the Northwest Corridor Section 2 Township 9 Range 5 East of Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Morning. Kent Schroeder County Engineer Department. I just wanted to have a couple of comments on this item and the next one. These are two rural developments that have been asking for maintenance since 2013. Meadowview had finally got some of the repairs made, but Cardwell Reserve was contingent upon the adjacent development of Foreman Ridge. And I also, this will add about a mile of new maintenance to this existing 74 miles that we do on rural subdivisions. But I also wanted to point out that there's six other developments, three of paved development and three of gravel, that have also requested maintenance and we've sent some responses, response letters to them. This will, those six will add another four miles to our maintenance. So I just wanted to keep you kind of informed on that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Commissioner Hudson.
Are the general rules that they have to bring these roads up to county standards and have, what, 60 or 75% occupancy?
It depends on the, well, Cardwell Reserve is a smaller sub, lots are smaller, so they have to have a higher percentage. Three-acre nominal area for a lot would be 60%.
That's what I ran in my mind.
And we do require them to bring it up to county standards and that's kind of why it takes a while.
Bet. Thank you.
And for each one of these, you probably, you and your staff did onsite views, maybe dozen, 20, two dozen times out, just to make sure that one boulder's been moved, or the drainage ditch, or, I mean, it is amazing.
Mailboxes are in the right place.
We put out a punch list and, and then depending on the timeframe it takes them to do that, additional things occur.
A lot of work goes into it.
Yeah, I think it's necessary that the people realize that in order to have the county go out to maintain it, it does have to meet the standards.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the resolution for acceptance of Meadowview First Edition for county maintenance. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilshen.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a resolution for acceptance of Cardwell Reserve Edition for Maintenance by Lancaster County generally located at Southwest 12th Street and West, and West Denton Road in the Northeast Corridor Section 21 Township 9 Range 6, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the resolution for the acceptance of the Cardwell Reserve Edition for Maintenance by the county. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilshen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a resolution in a matter of requesting the Nebraska Department of Roads to act on behalf of Lancaster County to administer federal assistance from the Department of Transportation through the Emergency Relief Federal Program for the Federal Highway Administration related to County Bridge D-88 and authorizing the county engineer and the chair to execute the attached certificate of compliance.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So Bridge D-88 located on Agnew Road, just east of Highway 79.
Can you put it on the Elmo, please?
I actually don't have a map with me today of that. So is, is a bridge that is on a federal aid route. So bridges on the federal aid route grid during the flooding event of May of 2015 were reimbursable by federal highways, by the federal highway program. And so they were exempted from FEMA-paying damages. So this is a bridge that we repaired. Actually, you guys might remember passing the contract, it was not in the budget. And we repaired it last year. We did add a few improvements to it that were non-reimbursable. This is an 80/20 split. Those improvements were really letdown pipes to pick up the ditch flow and let it down into, into the culvert. Bridge D-88 is another one of our bridges that has a very interesting history. It, if you have a chance to go out and look at it, it's a very beautiful bridge. It has a lot of craftsmanship to it. That, it, it is a high-end structure from the 1950s. It was built and given to us by the Department of Defense because this was a missile route. And it needed to be able to convey the intercontinental ballistic missiles to their silos. And so this, this is a tough little bridge.
Any discussion?
Move approval.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve this resolution. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Wilshen.
Abstain.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. I is a resolution in a matter of closure of Bridge B-147, Bridge Y-181, and Bridge G-111.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So today I am requesting that we close Bridge B-147, G-111, and Y-181. All of these bridges were built back in the time of WPA. So I'm going to talk a little more about the detail of them. They're all built with the same construction components, i.e. a abutment on a spread footing. A spread footing which is similar what your house is on. The problem with these spread footings is once the water washes out underneath the spread footing, you can't get stable soil underneath that spread footing again. We have inspected it, inspected these bridges. We have determined them to be a clear and present danger to the public. In addition to that, last week I did get a chance to have a rather extensive conversation with several local consulting engineers who specialize in this type of work, as well as the state bridge engineer, for is there a solution and a quick fix for these? And the reality is, there's three fixes for them. A new bridge, a new box culvert, or pipes. Because they were all built or engineered in the late 1930s, we're going to need to get some hydraulics engineering on them so that we can size them appropriately for the flows that exist. And I'd just like to talk a little more about them and kind of some of the things that you see. Bridge B-147, which is located on Agnew Road approximately a half-mile east of North 98th Street, has had a history actually clear back to 1947 at being a maintenance problem. You can see where we actually added to the wing wall of the abutment to try to help keep some of that erosion out from under there. And here in 2014, you can see that we were starting to get some erosion, in particular down at the base of that footing. And this is actually exposed footing in this bridge. I have another picture of it right after the, the flooding of 2014 in October. Again, it's submerged, but you can see the exposed footing and the back wall weeping. Last week's inspection showed additional exposed footing, showed headcut on the downstream side of the bridge, and, and actually showed severely undermined footing. And there's water in the picture, of course, because there's water under these bridges. But our bridge engineer did let me know that he could stick his arm all the way underneath that footing. And so I, this bridge, by the critical findings that I discussed with you last week from Federal Highway and Nebraska Department of Roads, I am recommending closure of this bridge. Interestingly enough about this bridge, in 1937, this bridge was built for $1,777.89.
Seventeen hundred?
Seventeen hundred seventy-seven eighty-nine. It was built with WPA funds, which I think is very interesting. The county share was of the bridge cost was $1,442.69. So although, as the state bridge engineer and I discussed this, and our county isn't the only one that's had a lot of recent problems with these. We discussed that, you know, there isn't really an easy fix for these, but we certainly did get our money's worth out of them. This bridge constructed in 1937. It's 79 years old, so that means that we operated this bridge for about $18.26 a year.
Try to replace it.
And, and, yeah, so.
Commissioner Wilshen.
Well, Deb was going to ask the same question I was.
Oh, sorry. Traffic count? Traffic count, yes. I do have a traffic count. This bridge is a 30-foot span, which again, we talk a lot about the span. And it has an ADT of 144 cars a day. Oh, wait. Sorry, I flipped my page. This bridge is a 28-foot span and has an ADT of 72 cars a day. 28 feet, 72.
72. Okay.
Okay.
And how long do you anticipate the road would be closed? Tell a fixer, rebuild, or a box culvert?
We need to go out for RFP. We need to get a consultant on board to study the hydraulics of these. We'll need to get a recommendation for the sizing of the structures, and we'll need to get Army Corps of Engineer permits. So, and hire a contractor. So I would say we're looking at next spring.
At the earliest.
Commissioner Wilshen.
Has this bridge, or any of the other bridges that we'll be discussing, have they ever been weight-rated?
Some of them are posted. I did not bring the posting information of this bridge with me today. But last week I did note that several of them are posted bridges also. So we post a bridge when we believe it to be structurally deficient, is, is when we go ahead and post it for weight rating.
And so you don't know for sure if all three of these bridges have been weight-rated, or?
I would have to look that information up and, and get it back to you. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that with me right now. They are, the reason that I'm recommending them for closure is because they did not pass a scour critical inspection. So remember, we have scour critical, we have functionally obsolete, which means it doesn't meet with the requirements of today's equipment. And then we have structurally deficient. Structurally deficient is when it can't hold the weight that we recommended. Many of these bridges are some of each. Last week's I know were, this week's I believe are not.
Well, and the reason I ask is that's a question, because most of these bridges are in my district, which is, that's the very common question, which is, can, is it one of the solutions?
Certainly.
Lowering the weight limits?
So it's not for a scour critical. It is for a functionally deficient. So on a scour critical bridge, it means that the abutment itself is not stable anymore. So, so these have all been scour critical closings, so the abutments are not stable anymore.
Okay. Commissioner Avery.
Could I go on to, oh, sorry. And I have two more bridges to present. And so if there are questions on this bridge, or the, the process in general, I guess I can take them.
So what does that mean?
Well, I have details I wanted to discuss with you of G-111 and Y-181.
Why don't we go on with the, with the other bridges?
I do appreciate your question.
I don't have a, a question about a bridge specific, so I will wait.
Thank you. Bridge G-11 is, is a bridge located on Alva Road approximately 100 feet of the north of, 100 feet west of North 112th Street. So this is, we don't have any indication in our records that this was a WPA bridge, but it was built in 1939 and it was built with the same type of construction, construction method as several of these others that I've come forward to you with. It does show that Lancaster County, my records do show that Lancaster County funds paid $3,413.36 for this bridge. So this bridge is 77 years old. That means that the cost of operating this bridge for the last 77 years, less general maintenance, has been $44.33. So here's a little older picture of this bridge, and I think what you can see here, and the reason I brought this picture is because it really gives you an idea of what has happened to our bridges. You want to back it out?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So when we see the embankment here on the Bridge G-11, what would have been in place at the time the bridge was built is it would have been more like a V or a trapezoid underneath, and there would have been soil over this part. Creeks and drainageways don't necessarily behave uniformly, and so they don't always stay in the middle as they expand and as they have storm flows. Here is a picture so you can get some idea of the beating this poor little bridge has taken in the last, in the last two years. Here is a picture of 2014 and that serious rain event that we got then. This is the City of Lincoln's, it's a blow-off valve for their, their water main that runs through here. And you can see where the water ran high enough that it got debris, debris around the channel and debris up around the water main. Here is another picture from the embankment of that bridge after that October storm with debris again. This is a picture, what you're looking at here is, this is a five-foot probe. It's stuck underneath the abutment, showing that there is a void underneath the abutment. And this is one additional picture. I'm going to show it like this, and then I'm going to rotate it. And what this picture is showing in its entirety is that that footing has been completely exposed, exposed and undermined. Next I have Bridge Y-181. Bridge Y-181 is located on Princeton Road approximately a half-mile east of South 134th Street. This bridge was also built by WPA forces in 1940. It was built for a total cost of $3,496.66. The county share of that was $1,055. So we have operated this bridge for 76 years for a cost of $13.88. Another interesting fact about this bridge is that the materials used to build the bridge were actually cut from our Lancaster County quarry. So it is cut limestone. And this is a bridge that we have talked about before. The reason we've talked about it before is we were able to get a grant, 75/25 share, Lancaster County, the 25, from NEMA to replace this structure as a dangerous and hazardous structure. Unfortunately, with some of the reduction in FEMA funding for the bridges in our area, because those bridges aren't being funded, NEMA's not getting the money to put in their hazardous bridge program. I did spend some time with them last week too, trying to figure out, could we go forward? Even though they've asked us not to go forward right now, could we go forward and still get the reimbursement? Because now this bridge is closed. And unfortunately, their answer was no. And that is going to be something that we're going to have to talk about as a group if we want to wait with this bridge, or if we want to go ahead and turn the grant back to them and try to apply for an additional grant in the future.
What was the dollar amount of that grant? That's all right.
I'll have to get that back to you. So Bridge Y-181 has one of the little WPA plates on it. Y-181 capacity, 20 tons. Of course, that's, that was when it was originally built. 20 tons was considered a heavy piece of farm equipment back in the 1930s. So this, this bridge, we've been monitoring it closely. Obviously, we were able to get the grant in it in the hazard program. Here's a piece of the footing. Actually broken off. Here is, although I don't have any records of it, it's easy for us to see that at some point, somebody, it looks like somebody tried to extend the wall down or, or something, there's something that's gone on here that was a fix that didn't work. And again, you can see that the footing of this is completely undermined. And here's, here's one more, one more picture. Again, showing the, the edge of the footing actually broken off and undermined. So this is, this is a 30-foot bridge that has an ADT- So, um, this is, uh, this is a thirty-foot bridge, um, that has an ADT of twenty-two.
Commissioner Wilson?
Well, just going back to G one eleven, what was the ADT on that?
Um, G one eleven was a thirty-foot span with an ADT of one forty-four.
Okay, Commissioner Avery?
Uh, Pam, have you done a complete inventory of scour critical bridges? Do you know how many we have? And whether you're gonna be coming back here and asking us to approve more closures?
Um, so last week, as I testified, we actually have, uh, and, and I don't have my map in front of me right now. We have either thirty-two or thirty-three scour critical bridges. They're labeled, that are labeled scour critical by Department of Roads and fall underneath that Federal Highways Regulation and the Department of Roads requirements for inspection anytime after a three-inch rainfall event or the creek has flown bank-to-bank for more than four hours. In addition to that, though, we have another twenty-two structures that we are watching. They're not, they're not on NDOR's list yet, but we have concerns about them. Will I be coming back in the future? Uh, at, at this time, I don't know. Uh, we have inspected the bridges for the storms. Uh, sadly, we don't seem to be able to catch a break with these storms. Or maybe I should say, we, we've caught many lucky breaks because I know Omaha has been hit, uh, a couple times in the last week. And we just can't seem to get out of this really wet rainy cycle sadly.
Commissioner Wilson?
So of the total bridges that we've closed, which is what, nine now?
Twelve.
Twelve?
If you close these.
If, if we close this, this will make twelve bridges that we've closed. So just two parts to my question, which is one, can you kind of discuss what you're doing within the area that you're proposing these closes? So that adjacent landowners, um, are being consulted and being informed. But also going forward, are your plan, I mean, do you plan to prioritize these bridges based on ADT? Um, I guess that's kind of what I'm looking for. Let's see if you can provide us some insight.
Yeah, plan of action.
Um, so if we're to talk about these bridges, um, and these fit in that G two bridge that is, um, over on, uh, Waverly Road. That bridge, um, is also a concrete with a concrete spread footing of the same vintage. Um, the Bridge F two twenty-five, concrete, uh, with that spread footing. All of these bridges have the same problem. And they're all of the same construction era. So with those, we need to do hydraulic studies and, um, check modern flood planes and, um, modern Corps of Engineers requirements, um, endangered species, and go ahead and figure out whether those still need to be a bridge, 'cause they're small. Whether they could be a box culvert or if it was a really great day for us, whether they could just be, uh, a, a pipe. The, uh, and so as we look at those, you know, we're gonna have to study those. So, so that, that's like the A part of the problem, and that's the harder part of the problem. The B part of the problem is the H-beam, um, timber, timber, uh, we have H-beam and timber pile with plank back walls. Those, um, we have a bridge crew. We are clearing the utilities, which also does take some time because a lot of these bridges have, um, wind stream in particular or Time Warner cable hanging off of them. We have to get them to, uh, kind of pull their utilities off and set them aside. So those, we are under the process of, we can go in and reconstruct, um, right away. Some of them where the channels are deeper, we may have to hire a, um, a contractor to come in and help us with those. So we are working on, uh, the bridge that we closed last week, the, um, H sixty-six. Uh, we did work on the other bridge, um, with success, um, that was on One Hundred and Twelve Street north of O that we closed earlier this year and were able to get it back open. The good news is, is once we're able to fortify these abutments and stabilize them, we can go back to the state and we can get them taken off our scour critical list, which really helps with the overall, um, time spent with inspections and watching these bridges, um, for our department. So we are gonna look at, um, traffic. Uh, we are gonna look at, um, you know, importance. Uh, in some cases, we have bridges that are, like, for example, this G eleven and this H sixty-six are right by a very large, um, Catholic church facility called the Good Counseling Center, um, which on any given day has seventy residents, uh, in it. And so we wanna make sure that there is a way in and out of that center. So that's why we're attacking that timber back wall first in, in order to get better access to that facility. Um, and it had a higher traffic count. But yes, we'll be looking at traffic counts. Um, we'll be looking at environmental, uh, regulations and, and, and hydraulics to figure out what is the best attack, plan of attack for all of these. And what I would really like to do is to gather up all this information, because it is a lot. And even in one month, I'm not gonna be able to have all the hydraulic studies contracted and complete. But I would like to come back to you at a staff meeting and discuss a global plan of attack for all of these.
Great.
And a, and a global strategy. 'Cause right now I'm really, um, unfortunately, when you're in the closure mode, you're very tactical. You know, how, how do we, how do we protect, um, how do we protect citizens?
Actually, right now you're in reactive mode.
Right?
Well, so just to follow up, and that was the other part of my question, which the coordination or the information sharing with the, uh, adjacent property owners? Because I mean, this will adversely impact, and it has adversely impacted quite a few people.
So, um, we do go ahead and contact the fire departments in the area. Um, it was really only last week that I learned as the engineer, and, you know, sometimes as an elected official, we have some humbling, uh, educational processes, um, how interdependent all the, the local volunteers are along with the City of Lincoln, that they all coordinate together. So we are now notifying all in the county, all of the fire departments, just so they would all have knowledge if something is closed in case they were specially activated to go to that area. And then we're notifying the schools. Um, so far we have not been, um, although I have gone out and talked to several, um, several farmers in several locations, I haven't gotten out to all of them. And we, it's, it's difficult to track down residents. So we're still in the process of getting out and talking to some of these residents to let them know what's going on.
Commissioner Hudson?
Well, I can realize that you've got a tremendous load and you're tremendously busy, but the three bridges which were closed, uh, last, uh, a, a week ago that you asked, asked us to act upon last Tuesday, did you notify the county commissioners that were involved or the chair of the county board before you put up the barricades on, I believe it was Thursday or Friday?
Um, I'd have to go back and check my notes. I, I, I thought I did notify the chair, but, um, the last couple of weeks with so many of these all at once, um, you know, it has been a lot. So, um, again, if we could get together and talk about an overall strategy for that, uh, in the future, I think that that would be appropriate.
Well, I, I certainly do, and I checked with the chair this morning and she didn't have a record of, uh, being notified. And, uh, those of us that are in those districts, uh, these landowners and residents and people coming home from work that didn't know these roads were gonna be closed, who do you suppose they call first? They call the county commissioner in that area. And, uh, uh, I was unaware of like on F two twenty-five. And since last Tuesday, I've contacted your office every day, asking for a meeting with you on two twenty-five and the engineering, uh, notes on that bridge. And I know you've been busy, but, uh, uh, I think you did try to return one phone call on my cellphone. And I have instructed you that I do not have a message capability on my cellphone, so it has to be the, the home phone. But I, um, would love to meet with you on, and discuss, uh, two twenty-five further. And I guess I do have one question. Have you considered the possibility of, uh, channeling off the flow and, uh, pumping cement slurry underneath the areas if it's a small area on those bridges?
Um, so Commissioner Hudson, what you're talking about is flowable fill. Um, you know, I have used flowable fill for, um, what I'll call non-bearing, non-structural bearing conditions uh, in, in my engineering career. Um, it's my engineering opinion and it is standard engineering practice not to use flowable fill for this solution because it doesn't have a known bearing strength. And so it's not a good solution, um, for this. Uh, I, I know that, um, you had hoped that it would be, and I appreciate you doing that research for me. Um, I did talk to the contractor that you talked to about that. And, um, he agreed that in this, for this application, that wasn't a good solution. And I will say that, you know, it's my engineering opinion that that is not a good solution.
Well, thank you for at least considering it and doing the research.
Commissioner Avery, I have to apologize, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
I thought you'd recognize that I was next in the queue, anyway.
Oh, I.
This is twelve. That's a big number. Uh, and I'll go back to what we discussed, I believe it was last week, that after the flood of last year, we closed two. Um, would you be able to, uh, assign priorities to these twelve? Which, which three or more do you consider most critical? And have, and have to, um, be given immediate emergency attention?
So I don't have the details of all twelve of those bridges with me right now. Um, so I'm not gonna give you a priority.
This is not the first time I've asked you this.
Because anything that I would bring to, forward to you at this point would, would, um, would not be educated looking at the whole.
But I asked you this question weeks ago. And I told you then that until I could get you to do that, I was not gonna be supportive of your budget and your request to this board.
You know, I have repeatedly brought priorities to this board. I would like to remind this board that I am talking about these three bridges today. And so I will answer questions about these three bridges.
And nothing else?
That is correct.
Then I will withhold my support.
I will move we approve the resolution, the matter of closure of Bridges B one forty-seven, Y one eighty-one, and G one eleven.
Second?
It's moved in second that we approve this resolution, the matter of closure of Bridge B one forty-seven, Y one eighty-one, and G one eleven. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Not voting.
Wilson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
No voting.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, two non, non-votes. Four J is a federal equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office regarding equitable sharing activity of drug forfeiture funds for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty sixteen.
Move approval. There can be a second before discussion.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this?
Lancaster County Sheriff Terry Wadner, I'll answer any questions you might have about this. This is an annual, uh, renewal, uh, certification that we, uh, that we file every year with the federal government.
Okay, yeah, you've, we've had this before, okay? So it's been moved in second that we approve this, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilson?
Uh, he stepped out just for a moment.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is an interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman for one sheriff's deputy for law enforcement services within the corporate limits of the City of Hickman. The City of Hickman will pay eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight cents per month for the services. Term of the agreement is October first, two thousand sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Morning, Terry Wadner, Lancaster County Sheriff. This is a continuation of a contract we've had for dedicated law enforcement services for Hickman. Um, and I think we've been involved in this, uh, in this, uh, interlocal agreement with them for, since the early eighties. So a good thirty-five years. We have a deputy assigned to, to, uh, handle calls for service in Hickman and then handle any issues they might have internally.
Move approval.
Second. Moved in second that we approve the interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman. Uh, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. L is an agreement with the City Hickman for the provision of law enforcement services within the city on an as-needed basis. The sheriff shall assume, shall assign one deputy for duty and provide the sheriff's, and provide one sheriff's cruiser. The county shall be reimbursed at the deputy's overtime rate for the services provided and shall be reimbursed fifty-four cents per mile for cruiser maintenance. Total compensation that county shall not exceed four thousand five hundred dollars. Term for the agreement is October first, two thousand sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Terry Wadner, Lancaster County Sheriff. Uh, this is an addendum or, uh, an additional agreement with the city. Um, the, the, the agreement you just approved under, um, item K is, is for forty hours of dedicated service every week. Um, this, uh, item under item L is if there are special projects or special events that they have that they want dedicated law enforcement services for, then they'll let us know. Uh, the deputy will work it and, and we bill them then for that service. So it's a little bit extra, but it's not a set amount every month.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. M is Medicare enrollment application for clinic group practices and certain other suppliers for Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center. The application is to change the center's address to its new, new location at eight twenty-five J Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this Medicare enrollment application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilson?
Stand.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one extension. Four N is an agreement with Edward D. Weins for diversity and cultural awareness training for the staff and management of the Lancaster County Youth Services Center. The county will pay up to four thousand dollars for the training.
Move approval. Second.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Shelley Schindler, Director for the Youth Services Center. I, um, am coming before you. As you know, um, it's been a contract I've worked with Dave on for quite some time. Um, I'm really excited about this contract. And I appreciate your support, that will come from my existing funds. But, um, to clarify, um, we have a very diverse community. I have a very diverse workforce. I have an over-representation of minorities in my facility. It's not a new issue. It's not just here, it's nationwide. And it is a fact that unconscious psychological processes, so not purposeful, but they're in your mind, they can shape how we work with people. And, um, I love my community and I love my kids, like, and I care about my staff. And I wanna make sure that we as a community can do everything we can to ensure that people are treated fairly and respectfully. Everyone has a story. And Mr. Weins is going to help us better understand that. And I appreciate your support in going forward with this training.
Commissioner Hudson?
How many hours of his services will this four thousand buy?
Um, what it's gonna do is four trainings with twenty-five people, at least, in the training. Um, I'm going to have every staff, including contract staff, from maintenance, um, to teachers, um, attend, I would like to, I can't, um, there's some requirements that I can't make happen. Um, I am inviting other people in to, to go through it. It's something the county jail did, and they've incorporated into their training. And, um, I hope other people think about these trainings. And I appreciate your leadership.
Yeah, Commissioner Avery?
I know Ed Weins. I think you made a great choice. You're gonna like him, and he does a lot of this work. And he served for many, many years as the university's diversity coordinator.
Yes. Yeah, and I too know Ed, and he's gonna be a great guy to put that on. So, any other? So, thank you. Okay.
We have a motion, second.
Oh, we do, okay. It's moved in, that's right. It's been moved in second that we approve this agreement with Ed Weins. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an agreement between the Nebraska Administrative Office of Probation, Bryan Health, on behalf of its independent center, and Lancaster County for non-physician and substance abuse treatment services for adolescents placed in the Lancaster County Juvenile Drug Court. The county will pay up to two thousand. The county will pay up to $2,000 for the services. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2016.
Hi, Lori Griggs, Juvenile Chief Probation Officer. This is really kind of putting a, into a chapter maybe of the county's flexible fund support for Juvenile Drug Court and Judge Thorson's desire to have that initial, some of those initial fundings that were in place since 2001, when our Juvenile Drug Court began. So, we have met since we have last met. We, a variety of stakeholders have met. Judge Thorson with Probation Administration, the State Problem Solving Court Coordinator, Cedars people about the Tracker and EM. So, we're all prepared to move forward with this transition. And after this first quarter of some funding to help Independent Center move with that transition, Jerome Berry's been fantastic in committing and staying committed to the Juvenile Drug Court regardless of these administrative fees going away. They will just try to work to plan to maybe not be in person as much, that type of thing, but not compromise their work for the judge. Cedars as well is very committed to our judge. So, we feel like we're ready to go forward and we'll move toward voucher funding with everything and just finish out. So, if you haven't noticed, that Cedars Tracker contract just went away. So, we're not even having that in front of you. It's just the independent, the non-vouchable funding for the Independent Center for that quarter that we talked about last time.
Laurie, we appreciate your dedication to this and your leadership to make it happen, and I will move approval.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve this agreement.
Thank you. Thanks for all your support for this. I know Judge Thorson's very appreciative. She wrote that letter and you agreed last year, and so, I think it's a win-win. We'll move forward and.
Well, thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we approve this. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an interlocal agreement with the Nebraska Administrative Office of Probation Administration for the operation of the Lancaster County Juvenile Drug Court. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this interlocal agreement with Nebraska Administrative Office of Probation Administration.
And just for clarification, because it's kind of confusing in the other one, it, the voucher funding portion of the Juvenile Drug Court will be ceasing as of September 30th. But with regards to the administration of the Juvenile Drug Court and providing space and equipment for Juvenile Drug Court, the county is still supporting in that way. So, that's why the difference in the two ending dates and still showing our support for Juvenile Drug Court.
Yeah, thanks for that explanation. Right. Okay. Any, please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is a contract with Midwest Storage Solutions, Inc. to provide wheelhouse storage system with floor prep work. Cost to county is $41,861.65.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract with Midwest Storage Solutions. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is a contract with Paramount Linen to provide rental and cleaning of mats, various linens and related items. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. Cost to county is not to exceed $10,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this contract with Paramount Linen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is amendment to county contract C-13-481 with Midwest Services and Sales Company for the annual supply of greater blades. The amendment renews the contract from October 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2017. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $44,200.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Midwest Service and Sales. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4T is an amendment to county contract C-12-477 with Husker Car Wash, Inc. for the annual requirements for vehicle washes and related services. The amendment renews the contract from September 17th, 2016 through September 16th, 2020. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $16,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Husker Car Wash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. U is an amendment to county contract C-12-478 with Jet Splash Full Service Car Wash for the annual requirements for vehicle washes and related services. The amendment renews the contract from September 17th, 2016 through September 16th, 2020. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $16,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment with county contract with Jet Splash Full Service Car Wash. Yes.
I wonder if we could have the purchaser come up? I see one, two, three, four, five of these contracts, all $16,000. Are all of these necessary to wash vehicles?
Well, it is a cumulative amount for the five altogether.
It's not to exceed.
And so, but yeah, the reason we have them the way they are is because they are located in different parts of town so that this is a city and county contract. So, like, there are LPD stations and even the sheriff's office way out on the east edge of town or on the south and different places. The one is for a bay where they can go in and actually wash off the really heavy mud and stuff and when they have their vehicles coming off of gravel roads. So, that's why we have so many of them.
A lot of money for washing vehicles.
That's also over four years, correct?
Four, yeah.
So, it's $4,000 a year for that. And that's for, like I said, it's for all county departments that use it, mainly the sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
Yep. Yeah, we had a motion.
Okay, please call the roll.
Hudson? Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. V is an amendment to county contract C-12-476 with Randolph Car Wash for the annual requirements for vehicle washes and related services. The amendment renews the contract from September 17th, 2016 through September 16th, 2020. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed $16,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this county contract with Randolph Car Wash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. W is an amendment to county contract C-12-479 with Westo Superwash, Inc. for the annual requirements for vehicle washes and related services. The amendment renews the contract from September 17th, 2016 through September 16th, 2020. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $16,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Westo Superwash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Before we keep on going, I happen to see a couple of our attorneys sitting in the back. Could we move G.G. forward and let them go?
This is 4G.G., set in the annual salary for Charles Byrd Jr., Deputy County Attorney in the amount of 73,771 dollars as Attorney One effective September 6, 2016.
Good morning. Joe Kelly, Lancaster County Attorney. To my right is Charlie Byrd, B-Y-R-D. He is our newest hire in the county attorney's office. As you can see, my intent is to bring him on board in the amount of 73,771 dollars as an Attorney One Step Six. Here is the reason that he is not coming in as an Attorney One Step One. As you know, in the last few years, we've had a drain of some great, well-seasoned attorneys who have left us, judgeships, and otherwise. Charlie comes to us with 16 years' experience as a prosecutor, beginning after his graduation from Wake Forest Law School in North Carolina, where he was a prosecutor for about 12 years and eventually the chief deputy in his office there. He and his wife now live in Lincoln, Nebraska. Charlie is currently employed with the Attorney General's Office until we hire him. And in that light, he's been with the unit in the AG's office that goes out west to try murders and other high-level crimes in those counties that cannot afford those sorts of prosecutions. So, it is for that reason that I'm doing something I've never done before, which is hiring an attorney at the Attorney One Level Six rather than Attorney One Level One.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and we're glad to have the experience. And glad that you came to Lincoln. I'd move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second.
I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
Charlie Byrd. Come here from North Carolina. My wife went to UNL College of Law, and she's graduated from there and passed the bar, and she's got her own law firm now here in Lincoln, so I'm looking forward to it.
Oh, absolutely. Where from in North Carolina?
Boone, North Carolina, up in the mountains.
Okay. That's beautiful country.
It is.
Okay, great.
Well, you get to see an hour and a half of excitement that happens in the civil division.
Okay.
It's not always like this. Sometimes it's worse.
Okay, we have a motion and approval, we have a motion and a second to set the annual salary for Charles Byrd Jr. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Welcome to the.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Okay.
4X is an amendment to county contract C-13-494 with Garcia Chacon Enterprises, Inc. using the state of Nebraska NDLR contract number HH1305 for maintenance or repair of guardrails. The amendment renews the contract from August 22nd, 2016 through August 31st, 2017. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $6,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Garcia Chacon Enterprises. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Y is an amendment to county contract C-16-204 with JVC Kenwood, USA using the state of Nebraska contract number 14305OC for public safety communication equipment. The amendment extends the contract from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2018. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed $10,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with JVC Kenwood, USA. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Z is an amendment to county contract C-15-407 with NMC, Inc. for the annual supply of caterpillar filters. The amendment renews the contract with a price change from August 28, 2016 through August 27, 2017. Estimated costs will be increased for the contract term. Cost to county is not to exceed $18,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with NMC, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4AA is amendment to county contract C-15-426 with Pavers, Inc. for the annual supply of cold-mixed asphalt. The amendment renews the contract from September 17, 2016 through September 16, 2017. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed $2,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Pavers, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. BB is an amendment to county contract C-13-379 with Cross Dillon Tire for the annual supply of tires, tubes, and tire repair services. The amendment renews the contract with line item revisions from August 6, 2016 through July 31, 2017. The estimated cost for the services will be increased for the contract term. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $90,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Cross Dillon Tire. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. CC is an amendment to county contract C-13-378 with Bauer Built Tire and Service for the annual supply of tires, tubes, and tire repair services. The amendment renews the contract with line item revisions from August 6, 2016 through July 31, 2017. Estimated cost for the services will be increased for the contract term. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed $2,500.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Bauer Built Tire and Service. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. DD is a grant contract with El Centro de Los Americas to provide funding in the amount of $45,000 for the Joven Noble Program. Term of agreement is July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director for Lincoln Lancaster County. This is a grant contract through the Community Aid Fund. And again, community aid is that predetermined amount of money that we get through the state based upon our juvenile population. This particular grant allows for up to 75 youth who come in contact with the juvenile justice system or are at risk of having a truancy petition being filed to enter into Hoven Noble, which is an evidence-based program out of Colorado. This program is conducted at El Centro de Los Americas. It's also conducted at Park Middle School. The reason that they facilitate the program at Park is by request of the kids. It's easier for the kids to get there. They meet over lunch, they carry their lunch in, and they meet with the facilitator there.
Is it a male-female program, boys and girls together?
This particular program targets males. We found with this age group, oftentimes it's better to run two separate groups. So, this one targets males. Your next contract, same program uses a different curriculum that's geared more towards girls. But yeah, two separate groups is usually best.
Move approval.
Just a footnote here, I noticed you pronounce those words properly. You take in Spanish?
No, but I've sat in on enough of these programs that I can say those words.
Okay, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second, that we approve this grant contract with El Centro de Los Americas. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. EE is a grant contract with El Centro de Los Americas to provide funding in the amount of $10,000 for the Latina Leaders Program. Term of agreement is July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
And this is that same program except for girls.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second, that we approve this grant contract with El Centro de Los Americas. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. FF is a grant contract with the Bay to provide funding in the amount of $40,000 for the Bay Lincoln Program. Term of the grant is July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
And this is funded through Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds. This particular contract I'm pretty excited about. This is a new agency that's partnering with the county. This is basically to provide sort of a youth drop-in center in our community for kids at risk. And what makes the Bay the perfect location for this is they've also been selected by the state for the I've Got a Name Project. And the I've Got a Name Project is a sex trafficking project. So, the advocate that works directly with the state on sex trafficking is right there at the Bay. This is important to us because a lot of girls start entering into sex trafficking at the ages of 12 to 14. They often are either runaways, or they're being abused and neglected at home, so they choose to leave, or their family sell them into that. So, to actually have youth and to have an advocate there that's able to reach out to females in risk, we found that to be a very beneficial partnership, and that's why we wanted to particularly bring them onboard and offer this type of service at this location for our kids. In this particular contract, it's not funding per se the I've Got a Name Project, but again, it's still located at that facility, which is why we chose primarily to partner with them. In addition, they're also a neighborhood food pantry outreach site. So, for kids who maybe are in need of food, additional school supplies, they also offer that at the Bay, too.
Move approval.
Second, with comment, and it's my turn next to plan our volunteer opportunity, and this is where I want to go. I've never seen it, and I don't know if the other members of the board have...
I have not seen it.
But they really have expanded their programming and their outreach in the past couple of years. And so, sometime in January, we have our new board member on, we're gonna, that's where we're heading, if that's all right with the board.
I think that's, it's great.
And this particular organization, too, is trying to bring revenue in on its own, too. It's not just relying on tax money, on grants. They have a skate park there, and they offer skating lessons, too, on Saturday mornings to kids. So, they're trying to generate their own revenue.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That's $95,000. That's, we just keep racking it up. Okay, thank you so much.
Number five are consent items, right-of-way contract between Lancaster County and the following. William and Karen Sterns at 7777 West Middle Creek Road in the amount of $2,440. Marion Kruger Trustee, South 25th Street and Pella Road in the amount of $1,108.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Carrie Aldrich, Lincoln, Nebraska. Colloquy, C-O-L-L-O-Q-U-Y, from Latin, a conversation, especially a formal discussion. Some do not hear or do not hear well, or perhaps refuse to hear what I say. I spoke last week on budget matters in context of the Nebraska Budget Act. I started with reference to an obligation and authorization of an expenditure for some creature called the Five Zero Fund Club, an expenditure of a largely insignificant amount for what may be an insignificant program. Some define this money as apart from property tax dollar. The money is rather federal dollars that flow down. The thinking, it seems, the grant dollars are not state or local resources, not income tax or sales or property tax or fines or fees or permits. Therefore, looking wildly for an explanation, it must be free money. And so, it becomes free money, not from me, not from V, not from that person behind the tree. Free money. Leprechauns hit the jackpot. Free money, an imperfect understanding of government. The grant money is not free. Money is never free. There are always conditions and strings.